So the sheet that you have in front of you is a hypothetical. If we can get both of those pieces of legislation to pass, the highlighted line here is what Proctor's picture would look like. And if you'll notice, four columns over from the right-hand side is a zero. And what that means is that if we can get the 6 million from the state in bonding, we can get the $65 per pupil additional funding. Proctor wouldn't need to dip into any of its typical lease levy authority to help for their share of our project. And so that's what we're really hopeful for. And I'm really glad to see some head nods because that's really our goal right now is to educate you and to get some head nods thinking that this sounds like an okay idea if we can get the appropriate funding. So that's what I have for you. Do you want to add anything?
I do. So the reason that it's important for us is that we take those students that are really not able to be served in your schools. Previously, they were put like on home-based services is what it's called. And so they would be home all day and they'd maybe get one hour a day with a teacher. But it's really just not enough to do any kind of changing of their behavior or increasing their skills so that they can come back to school. I did some looking at the numbers that your district sends to us. And other than the first year, your district has sent five or six kids a year to our school. And then typically, we've been able to transition back a couple of those each year and then a couple more the next year.
Yeah. What questions do you have for us?
I don't know that I have any questions, but I just want to thank you for the work that you've put in and getting support from Senator Bach to bring this forward. That sounds like a really incredible opportunity.
Yes, yes.
How do I do one little thing I was thinking McGregor, that's a long ways away. How do we get those kids like depending on where we put this building? Like, does everyone just come to this building, even the kids from McGregor?
Yes.
They'll have an hour trip? Someone's gonna have an hour trip either way.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Each district does their own transportation of students to us. And so we were trying to find that centrally located spot.
Okay. Yeah, because not only McGregor, but Two Harbors and Silver Bay is even further. But Two Harbors, McGregor, and then down to Willow River. All three of those districts are the farthest points and they're about between 48 and 52 miles from the center point.
Yeah.
Each, so. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Please.
If you could get us the information on the bills and maybe send it to Steve and Steve can get it out to us along with the signers or sponsors of the bills from our state legislators so we can be in contact with them and put some pressure on.
Yes. So I did list the bills at the bottom of the one pager. The House files are there. I didn't list the Senate companions right now because they've been introduced in the House. We've testified in the House. And I can, we can get the links right to those bills so that you can see the progress and the authors. I will tell you that our bill in the House has 10 authors and then in the Senate has four authors. So we've got a lot of support behind us, but we'll get that information directly to Steve as well to pass on.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments? No site has been identified yet, correct? No. Okay. Nope. Yeah, nope. Nope. The center, the center point, just for reference, is around the Esco area. So not far from here. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Congratulations again. Thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment then and move on to the consent agenda. Item number nine. Looking for a motion to approve the consent presented in your packet. So. I hear a motion from Amy.
Jim and I are fighting over here.
All right, sounds good. All right. Any questions regarding the consent agenda tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed and that motion carries. We'll move on to items for individual action. Item number 10A. This is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to close open enrollment options based on reviews of class size and school capacities for the 2022 through 2023 school year. Looking for a motion. There's a motion by Lynn. Is there a second? I'll make that.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Joe. All right. John, do you want to go ahead and just touch on this topic and where we're at with certain class sizes?
Yeah, we do this every year. It's statutory. And so we try to keep an eye on what our class sizes are. We try to keep our classes at about 150 about or, you know, 160 in secondary. And so we watch that number for open enrollment and if need be, we started a waiting list. And right now we have one closed class in the, in the middle school. But other than that, we're watching things and we do this every year.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Oh, I just said resolution. Shoot, okay. All right, resolutions need roll call. So whenever you're ready, Lynn.
Four.
Yes.
Proctor.
Yes.
Agorn.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Item number 10B. Accept the notice of desire to negotiate from Proctor's administrators and direct superintendent Engel King to establish dates and procedures to negotiate the 2022 through 2024 contract. Looking for a motion. So move by Amy. There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comment regarding this item? We just asked for all contracts to be tidied up before the transition to our new superintendent happens. So looking to kind of get that ready to go. That's all right? Perfect. Okay. Any other, if there's no other questions, then we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and that motion carries. Item number 11. Items for discussion and information. Superintendent, update from John.
Good evening, everybody. I'll just start with updates on curriculum and instruction. Certainly, next, at a next board meeting, you'll have a chance to hear from our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee that we call the APAC. They met in, on March 21st, just to talk a little bit about the plan. We noticed that we are not in compliance and part of that is because of the COVID years, our inability to hire a Native American liaison. That's probably the biggest thing. So we're working on that right now. The committee will be here at our next board meeting to talk about moving forward with a new plan. And we did hear some, some good news. Cloquet has been named an integration district again. So we'll be able to take part in the Achievement and Integration Grant that we lost last year. So it's, it's, it's nice to have that back. So we'll be addressing all of that at our next board meeting. We were excited to welcome back our middle school kids from Europe. They went on that amazing trip and hopefully they, we'll remember those, that trip for many, many, many years to come. We had representatives from the Carpenters and Patriots Union onsite on Thursday. They met with students interested in helping design the boxcar. That's that new clothing thrift store that we have for our students. That's coming along really nicely and I included the logo for our store. And, and that was done by Wayne Missigan in our print shop. So it's pretty nice. On Tuesday, April 5th, coming up, we have about 30 students will be taking the ACT onsite. Many students use this opportunity as a practice test before the real test in June or the official test, I should say. And then on April 5th, LSC nursing experience will take place at Lakeshore College. So our students will be have a chance to tour LSC to see if they're interested in that, in that, in that program. Management and leadership, some of the things that are happening. I attended an MREA legislative meeting we do every Tuesday. Likewise, I will today and look at some of the bills that are progressing. If you're interested in any of those bills, I try to, you know, refresh everybody periodically in our newsletters and, and forward things to you. If you're interested in any of them, please let me know. I had an administrative meeting on March 15th to review COVID protocols. And as requested by the board, we did talk a little bit about, about quarantine and, and changing the protocol for students who are not vaccinated. We haven't decided to move on that. It was recommended by the St. Louis County Public Health and our health department and our administrators that we not make a change at this time. We reviewed the enrollment on kindergarten, we're projecting, or not kindergarten, but our entire enrollment, we're projecting about 165 kids. That's on the high side to about 145. 1865, what did I say? 165? Yeah, because I'm thinking about kindergarten as well. So kindergarten registration is complete and we're still waiting for the final numbers on that. And I'll share that as the spring progresses. Region seven superintendents met on April 17th to review COVID protocols and to review legislative day at the Capitol, which is coming up on April 6th. And then our ATPPS advisory council, which is QCOM, unanimously approved Mark Hagemeier for another term as their coordinator in staff development for the next four years. I don't think there's a board action needed on that. That's staff approved. For facilities and transportation, we have replaced the oil burner, furnace burner. So we, we put a used oil burner in the, in the bus garage for probably about five years ago. They burn kind of dirty, as you might imagine, so we have replaced that. And so we're excited to be able to use that oil that, that, you know, just sits there. We're also looking at replacing every one of our light banners. And if you'll drive around some of the campuses, we've done almost all of them. I noticed there's two more that need to be done at the high school, but all of our elementary campuses and then as you drive up and down Kirka Street, the Rails Country banners have all been replaced as well. And that's done by, by Advance Hone in Cloquet. And we, every, every spring, we, you know, we start to think about our, our artificial turf so we can start practice earlier. And we get out there and we try to move some of the snow because the sun just really, really beats on that, on that field and it really kind of hastens the melt, if you will. And we're ready to go. If you drive by, you know, my first, first game is scheduled for April 4th. Well, they're always scheduled early in April, so we'll see what happens. It might be a little cold. It might be snowing. Just as a reminder, you know, we close school more often for snow events in, in April than we do any time of the year. Part of it is because those country roads get soft. You can't put plows on them. You gotta put graders on them and it's just, the counties don't have enough graders to, to keep things open. So we're hoping for no spring snows, for gosh sakes, huh? And last but not least, for community involvement, I attended the St. Louis County Meeting of Homeless Youth Prevention Aid, which is a new program that's coming to St. Louis County and all the counties in the state of Minnesota. So we get involved in quite a bit of dealing with homeless youth and, and how we can help them. And then we interface and try to support county resources as well. So those are the things that are happening around the district, or at least some of
Any questions, Joe? You got one?
I, I've got a comment, not a question, or I guess maybe a question. Kids in these chaperones from the Europe trip have before come to the school board to give a presentation. Will they be doing that?
Yeah, yeah, they will. Yeah, they will. We'll get some students too.
Cool.
And you know, Sidney Hadrick was a student chaperone.
Yeah.
But it's spring break, so.
Perfect. I had a question under management and leadership. You said you met with Aptig for a web design workshop. What's happening with that? I'm just always curious about the webpage.
Well, many things are happening with that. So it's, it's a little bit of a work in progress and we're, we're trying to get our page to look as, as good as it can. You know, I was, I noticed that International Falls closed school. The last snowstorm, so I got online to see what happened there. That snow was pretty heavy. They use Aptig and I believe Herman Town uses Aptig. So I'm kind of looking at their designs and seeing how the little nuances that they use that we might be able to say, hey, we like this better than that. So it's just a work in progress, Lynn. So, it's just a work in progress, Lynn. Send me an email and I'll make it visible and, and more findable.
Yeah, it seems to take a few extra clicks to get where you have to go. Oh.
What is it? Oh, yeah. Yeah. One of the things that, that most school districts do now when they build webpages and hire, you know, companies to do them is they assign those pages to the coordinators, directors, principals, secretaries, you know, that are responsible for those programs. And so, that has been assigned and we just have to make sure that it gets posted.
Lynn? Nice. Yeah. So, if you go under menus, and this is where I think, hi, everybody. If you have to scroll down, so there's like this open space so you don't think to... And then it has goals and forms, but it's not the most current.
No, it's, it's the actual plan or...
Ah, gotcha. Okay, all right.
I'm not there.
Okay.
No, I navigated.
Yep, no, that's, I thought you just didn't. I was like, oh, I, I thought I saw it, so I just went to go look.
Sorry. No, if I did a deep dive, I had scuba gear, I, I went in and I could not find it anywhere.
Well, the 2021 Proctor, it's blank. That's what you're getting at.
That's what I'm...
How about we get rid of that big blank space too? Like I think that...
I would think that that's, that's a, that's a form there, is my guess, that there's a form that needs to be filled out there or removed.
And there are still some board forms that are missing under policies. And I can give you a list.
Please do.
Because I went to look for them and they're on my, the agenda that I sent for the next policy meeting, the form will, it's listed as the form and it will say not on website. So, you can, you can see it. It's on the agenda I just sent.
I'll talk to Lori. We'll get it figured out.
Thank you. I sent it to Lori today. So, I thought, well, if there, if there is a big workshop, I'm kind of excited about it.
It was an introductory workshop for more people to learn how to do their own pages.
Okay. Okay. I, I was all fired up when I saw it. Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the superintendent update tonight? Okay, we'll move on then to, we already did number 11B. So, 11C is the public related items relating to the district from the Proctor 17. The Board Johnson's contract. Always want to make sure that we honor our Students of the Week analyst and March 24th edition, our Student of the Week was Kobe Mannanen. And then items relating to the district from WDIO News, March 15th featured Lexi Millbridge, the teen who is creating amazing custom order cakes and cupcakes, which look amazing. And then, let's see here. Item number 12, reports, school board committee reports in your packet. You'll see that there's an activities committee report as well as a staff development committee report. If anyone has any questions, Amy and Joe are here from activities and Lynn from staff development. Who else is on that with you?
Amy.
Boy, you've been busy. And we didn't, we, Cap isn't down here willing to do that, right?
She'll, yeah, she'll send that in.
Okay.
Yeah. Judy will send.
Okay. Great. So, we'll look for that next time.
Yep.
Okay. And then in your packet, item number 12B is a social media report card. There is an update on that with how things are. Anything to add on that, John? It's been kind of a quiet month. Moving on then to communications, item number 13, school board comments and observations to start things off. Any comments from board members tonight?
Yes. I always, I always... Babe, you just had an outstanding fundraiser. And so, Katie Phalen and Donell Bowden are the coordinators of the pie group there and they just had an amazing, topped all of their expectations fundraiser. So, that was, it was really exciting.
What was it?
It was a dance, dance, I didn't dance, but, but there was like a, like a dance athon thing they did and it was incredible. Kids were so excited. All of the kids got a free T-shirt. It was just amazing, the amount of money they raised.
You know, if John didn't ruin his knee with his triple lutz attempt, I would have put him as the, you know, like Dancing with the Stars elite. And you could have joined him, Lynn.
Do you remember when we did Dancing with the Stars at Proctor?
No.
We did. It was fun. Oh, no, we did. Gordy Barb and I did a trio dance. It was, it was unforgettable.
Do you have that video?
I hope not.
Okay.
Boy, it'd be nice to get a rerun for a fundraiser.
Well, that was a little mean. The other thing that I would like to talk about, Steve invited me over to the school this morning to the auditorium and the facelift that is going on in the auditorium is still progressing quite nicely and it's nice that the arts are celebrated and it's going to be incredible when it's done. So, today was meeting with Don Schafzner, I knew, I knew I would mispronounce his name, about sound and lighting and all kinds of things. So, it's, it's exciting and projection, so it's exciting.
Awesome. I'll have to sneak over.
It's, it's beautiful. It's coming.
Great. Any other board member comments tonight? What?
Absolutely.
Well, I can close, I'm okay. Do, well, I'll just do my traditional. So, every spring, I usually come to the board and talk about graduation festivities and such. And I happen to be coordinating the all-night grad party for this year's graduates with Allison Nicholson. Things are going lovely. If you'd like to order a pie, I will deliver on Good Friday. Just see me. I might use the cafeteria as a pickup location. I think I sold 100 pies in the fall and I might do the same this spring. At any rate, what I'm really asking for is on graduation night, board members, of course, we attend graduation, I'm looking for some chaperones. In the past and yearly, the school offers a chaperone for the bus that leaves from Skyline at about 3:00 on graduation Sunday and travels down to the deck with the graduates and helps to get the graduates prepared for graduation. Graduation starts at 6:00 PM and then afterwards, there is an excursion on the Vista and then we'll need chaperones for that and then taking the bus back up to Skyline afterwards. Jim and Joe did it last year. Steve's done it in the past. I'm unable to participate in that excursion this year because I'm coordinating. So, I'm looking for anyone who might want to volunteer for that, think about it and let me know. You don't need to commit right now, but I just wanted to put a bug in your ear. I know we have two board members missing. So, I'll applaud it again. You can also stay all night with me if you'd like. It's going to be great. All right, that's all I have.
Madam Chair, I think it would be more apropos coming from you if you would share with our TV audience, our special guests we have in the audience tonight.
Oh. For audience members who can't see the whole room, our new superintendent, Carrie Juntinen, is in the audience. We are happy that he's here. So happy.
I am ecstatic to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and catching up with what we've got going on. Sometimes we have quite the comedic act up here.
And as I mentioned previously, you don't have to attend the policy meetings, but after July, you're on the hook and they are, they are so much fun.
They're wonderful.
Yeah.
I think John just got it out here.
They were so hard on Zoom. Can I just say they were so hard?
They were terrible on Zoom.
What page are we on? What's going on?
Yeah, they were not fun on Zoom.
Oh, goodness. Good stuff there, folks. Anything else?
I'll just say that I have an eighth grader that's going to be going into ninth grade and it's, it was kind of fun to see him come home, know where to look in the catalog for classes and start to plan his high school career and having a nice template. It was, it was really nice to see him getting excited about it because all that planning gets them excited in seminars. So, that's a great thing that we do there.
I will also say regarding school in general, I've noticed a dramatic shift on all my, all my kids, just my two that are students right now, you know, but all the kids that come to my house all the time, all the kids, right? That it seems like everyone is like really on top of it right now. Well, no, but like even like last week, I mean, I mean, I had, I had one kid offer, asked to stay after school, you know, and, and acknowledge it herself, which is really great, you know? It wasn't the battle. The battle has ended and I'll just take that with some grace right now because I'm sure it's coming again. But just all the kids just seem like they're just super engaged right now, maybe excited for break, needing to meet some deadlines of checkpoints. And it seems like maybe we've turned the corner on just accountability and getting through the pandemic and maybe masks coming off have helped that, just all the things and, you know, I think the foot's on the gas pedal for everyone and, and I hope it doesn't let up and I hope we don't get that spring slide stuff. But I'm just super excited to see that we've got kids really engaged in learning and actively taking part in their education, excited about signing up for classes. Just all those things just seem to be like...
They do an academic year for student schools and that W where they're happy and then they kind of slide, then they get excited again, then they kind of slide and then they get excited again.
I know, but we don't have much longer, you know? So, but I, I haven't seen that in the past couple of years and it's, it's refreshing if anything. All right. Anything from you? Okay. Sounds good. All right. We have no student liaison members with us tonight. I always enjoy listening and hearing from them as to what's going on within the four walls of the school. Township and city communications, Jeff is here with us tonight. Is there anything new from board members that we need to discuss city or township wise or I'll defer? Is there anything that I didn't read in the annual meeting notes? Okay. Great, thank you. All right. Item number 14 then is a motion to adjourn. There's a motion from Amy. Is there a second? Thank you, Jim. Any comments or questions before we officially adjourn? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion carries and we are adjourned at 7:59. Thank you, everyone.